We will call Committee of the Whole to order. President Litton is not going to be able to join us for this part, but will be here for full council. So I will move to approve the minutes of July 3, 2023. A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes. So next up, we have a communication from Councilman Baker, Councilman Bullock, and myself regarding the Chamber of Commerce. And this is an update to the original ARPA request. And additionally, and together with that, we also have Resolution 2023-37, which would be the resolution to allocate funding if we would so choose. And that does have a blank amount line in it for us to decide what that funding number will be. So the council members remaining with funds are myself, Councilman Baker, Councilman Bullock, Councilwoman Marks, and Council President Litton. So, Councilman Baker, did you have anything you wanted to add to this as a answer before we take off?
No, I think you said it well, and I applaud you and Councilman Bullock as well for, you know, and the chamber who are here today, you know, for working together to kind of fine tune kind of exactly what they wanted to use the funds on, which I think is important from our perspective. So just looking forward to the discussion.
Great. Thank you. All right. So with that, does everyone have the, it is in the communication is the sheet that has the more detailed about what is in the ARPA request from the chamber. Do I have any colleagues with questions, would like more information from, I see we have the Chamber CEO Lauren Smalls with us, if we have any questions for? It's in Granicus, if you, it's in the, it's in the communication for this meeting. And then it's the second page of the communication. Okay, great. Thanks. All right. Do you have any questions or discussions to kick things off? Okay. Councilwoman Marks?
Thank you. Thanks for being here, those members of the chamber that are here. I think that the Chamber of Commerce is a very important organization to have in Lakewood in support of our small business community. One of the concerns I have with the spending priorities, I certainly would be all in support of investing in strategic planning before we invest in technology and a small business startup. I think that we may have more information that comes out of strategic planning that could help us with those other resources. But I think to, we don't want to put the cart before the horse. So I would be all in support of strategic planning first, then, once the strategic plan is outlined, then supporting other endeavors that may show to be even more important than what we're showing here. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Yeah, so for any members of the public who may be streaming at home, there's basically three sections to this proposal. One is the strategic planning. This would be to sort of identify the changing needs of the Lakewood small business community in a post-COVID economic environment. The second component is technology and communication tools, including updating the website, event software, and other technology and communication tools. And the third part is small business support and business startup. One piece that I particularly find interesting in that third component, the small business support and business startup, is the idea of offering membership dues so that some of our smaller newer businesses who haven't yet become members of the chamber, or might want to renew their chamber membership, but were going through financial difficulties during COVID, and this would help them benefit from those chamber resources. So I like that idea quite a bit of the scholarships. But do you have any other council members you'd like to speak or ask questions on this before I ask Ms. Smalls to come up? Councilwoman Marks?
Thank you. And I'm in favor of that, too. I think offering some type of scholarship for small businesses would be very important. But again, I don't know that we would want to do that until we have a strategic plan in place. And I think even with, if you've never, well, I know that you have certainly developed websites, and that is a very time-consuming investment. And you have to have your mission statement, and you have to have your plan in place before you can really set up a qualified website that makes sense. So you could invest in doing the technology now, only to find out after you do a strategic plan, much of that changes. That's why I believe in investing in the strategic plan first, and then after that, then we could offer the scholarships because we can show them the way to have a successful business. That's how I see it, anyway.
Yep, that makes sense to me. So Lauren, if you wanted to come up, I know we've talked about this, um, so I would tend to agree, and I'm big on strategic planning myself in my work, and that we want to make sure that what we're doing is actually in support of Lakewood small businesses, and we've identified that. So, hello, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Thanks. Would, I had a question, too, in terms of the strategic planning. Have you done some research on what that might look like in terms of consultant groups, or what kind of, you have some information here about, you know, speaking with the community, but do you have some other information about that, what that could, what could look like?
I do, and I have very, I have not delved in with a lot of detail, but I have recommendations of about eight different firms with kind of a ballpark. And that was kind of what I used to formulate my ask here, to kind of get an idea. And that was kind of an average of what they all charged. But basically, it would be a lot of assessment. They would come in, this strategic consultant would come in and take a look at what do we do now, how do we do it, what could we do better? And then, I think you said it well, too, assess the needs of the business community post-COVID, because there's still a lot of businesses that are struggling to recover from COVID. And just the way we've done things, like a monthly luncheon, how the chamber has always run, doesn't necessarily fit the bill right now for how people want to do things going forward. They're looking for inexpensive events, they're looking for education, they're looking for resources, and big time looking for networking. So those are some of the things I know, just having a pulse on my membership. But a strategic planner could come in, a consultant could come in and help me fine tune that to get more specific about what we would want to offer. And so there would be an assessment phase, and then there would be, you know, what should we be offering going forward kind of phase? And how would we staff that? How, you know, is, right now, I'm the only staff member of the chamber, I have a great board of directors that certainly contributes, but traditionally, we've had a part-time staff person as well. And definitely, I feel like I could use that person going forward. That also kind of ties in with the technology piece, though, because there's a lot of, like, our current website and the way we do things with our CRM package is very antiquated. And so I completely agree that, yes, you don't want to put the cart before the horse. Definitely, we want the strategic planning to be able to roll into what our plan for a website and rebranding could look like. But just on the surface, there's some things that are, like, redundant, that we have to do twice. I have to do it in my CRM, Chambermaster it's called, it's a special CRM system for chambers of commerce, and then I have to go again to WordPress and then update the same information I just, you know, so there's a little bit of an advantage from updating technology piece of it without the whole branding and everything rollout. So it kind of all moves hand in hand in my mind.
So.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, well, Councilwoman Marks?
Yes, Lauren, thanks for that information. Can I ask you, have you done a survey of your members of the chamber and asked them what works for them and what doesn't work for them?
We are in process of doing that right now. We've done that very informally. We've done lots of surveys over the years. So yes, that's something our members are definitely in tune with.
Because I think that would be very helpful to you to know kind of what direction you want to focus in, because we can assume what their problems are, but we don't really know what's happening behind their closed doors and how we could be more helpful. So I think conducting that survey would be very important. And I know, having worked in a small business, having created websites, the technology changes so quickly that once you get the website finished, there's a whole new technology that you wish you could have done things a little differently. So I hope with a strategic plan, once you have your, your mission statement and you have your goals established, that the people who would be helping you with the strategic plan would help reduce having redundancy, as you say you have now.
Absolutely.
So I'm glad that you're doing that, and having a survey of your small businesses would be very helpful, I would think.
Absolutely, yeah. It will help us plan what kind of resources to offer our small businesses that are going to be really useful and critical to them.
No, and if I could comment, too, and I know, I believe I sent you the information about the Goldman Sachs free seminar that is given at TRIC. I don't know if you've sent that out to the small businesses, but I would think that if I were a small business and I was going, going to have an opportunity to take that course for free, that it would be very helpful. And, and you have members of the community that have taken that same course that you might be able to query to find out, how did it benefit them? And I know Troy, you've, you know somebody who's taken that course, too. And, and I know Tracy Barnett, who has Mishi Lakewood, she signed up to take it in September. I connected her to that. So I think that's a great resource, and it's free, so for people who have, who are short on resources, I think that would be a great asset for them.
Absolutely, and I just met with Heidi, who is the outreach coordinator, last week, or the, I'm trying to think if it was last week or the week before. But yes, we met and were working together to partner together to offer that. And we did, I did offer that in my chamber update, too, when the deadline was coming up. So we'll be doing more work together, definitely, to promote that.
That's great, and that might be something that you even consider as a small business, that what could you lean as a leader of the chamber that you don't already know?
Absolutely.
That might be helpful, if you could attend that course as well. I wish I could attend it, but my job gets in the way, but.
It's so interesting.
It is very interesting. Thanks.
Thank you.
So for the, the quotes that you've gotten, or the general proposals for the strategic plan, I noticed in this, and I know we had talked some about some staffing studies to know, just because the staffing model has been one full-time and one part-time assistant, that doesn't necessarily mean, it sort of depends what your strategic plan shows, right?
Exactly.
So if the businesses say, what we really need is, you know, this type of service, and that requires a different skilled person, then that's what you need to bring on. So do those estimates include that type of staffing study work, or would that?
Yes, that would be part of the assessment that we would need to do, because, you know, like we were talking about the cart and the horse, depending on what our members want and what kind of programming we need to provide to be relevant, it might take one staff person, it might take two full-time, it might take, it might take one full-time person and two part-time people, depending on what skill sets we need. You know, there might be two very different people that could job share somehow, like a part-time position, that would offer us different resources, and I think we would have to definitely look at that to take advantage and position the chamber in the best possible way.
All right. So I know Councilman Bullock is running late, and since he's a co-sponsor of this, I'm not sure how much he was looking to contribute. So one idea that I have, given our conversation about strategic planning first, is if we were to talk about potentially moving forward with that piece and discussing, we have the spreadsheet pulled up with council members who have remaining funds. I think we could also potentially, given our conversation, pull out, so in the technology and communication tools section, we have the Chambermaster, which is the content management system that you mentioned specifically itemized out of that, because I tend to agree with Councilwoman Marks, that we'd want to wait on a website design and rebranding and all that sort of stuff until the strategic plan is finished. But this is more of just general functionality, is the Chambermaster piece.
It is, and I also, you know, spoke to Chambermaster, and they sent me this marketing guide, which is interesting, of all different ways that I can market the chamber and come up with additional sources of revenue through web banners and, you know, online advertising, letting people really beef up their members-only, the, it has a members-only function where members can log in and, like, give special offers or communicate with other chamber members. So that, we have, right now, I would say that's like kind of a skeleton plan, but this is a subscription, this Chambermaster, and so we are at like the, I think, plus membership, maybe. And then to get some of these other features, we have to upgrade to like a platinum membership, if you will. And I'm not sure if I'm even calling those the correct things, I would have to go back and look. But like at that bigger subscription, we would have the ability to do some, have some other tools to kind of engage with our membership, too, and add some value there. So that is part of the website update piece that I would be hoping to do sometime soon. Like I said, our plan right now is kind of antiquated, so.
And if we were to go ahead and do the strategic planning component and that Chambermaster would, what is the timeframe on a strategic plan, do you, would you estimate?
I've gotten everything from, let's see, three to eight months. So kind of in that timeframe.
Okay. So one thing I, one way forward that I could suggest to my colleagues here, and we can see if you agree, is that we could go ahead and discuss allocations for the strategic plan. I would put forward also the Chambermaster piece, so that would be looking at $70,000. And then, once your strategic plan is complete, if you would be willing to come back to us and share what you've learned through that process, and we can look again at, you know, how we can help you, help support Lakewood small businesses. How do we feel about that, colleagues?
Are you saying to go ahead with the scholarship program now, too?
I was suggesting the strategic planning and the Chambermaster piece, which is the functionality piece, but not the design component.
Yeah, I would prefer to wait until the strategic plan.
For all the tech?
For, for all of it, because I think it could take a whole different direction, even with the website design, you know, and even the marketing, if you're paying for marketing through the Chambermaster?
I feel like upgrading our Chambermaster would not be strategic planning contingent. I feel like that's just a technology, and whatever we would offer going forward based on our strategic plan, whatever we would offer would be supported by the Chambermaster piece.
And what is the cost of the Chambermaster piece?
That part is $30,000 to upgrade, and that would be for several years, that would be an investment for several years.
Well, I mean, that's a pretty hefty investment, but what if you did a strategic plan, and the company that did the strategic plan didn't advise you to go with the Chambermaster? That there might be other avenues that you could pursue that would benefit you more?
I feel like if we did not use Chambermaster, we would be using some other CRM comparable products. I don't think they would say go away completely for Chambermaster, because Chambermaster, it's our CRM package, so keeps track of all of our contacts, prospective members, people who have dropped, but then it also allows us to create events. It's our registration platform. When somebody goes on our website or goes, you know, clicks the link on social media to register for whatever event or luncheon, it, it captures it in, it's my, also my invoicing tool for membership dues. So I don't see, I don't see that being contingent on a strategic plan. I feel like we would need some tool, whether it be Chambermaster, or maybe there's a Chambermaster competitor out there. Most chambers that I'm aware of all use Chambermaster. It's such a little niche product, but I would be open to looking at, at a different product, absolutely. But I think that with the planning, if they said go away from Chambermaster, they would say replace it with X, that would be comparable.
I understand what you're saying, that it's more like a software tool to use specifically for chambers, so it kind of captures all of your needs in one program.
Yes, and it feeds through to the website, too, but just not in an optimal way right now, because we need to upgrade.
And Councilwoman Marks, I would, I would agree with you that in terms of the website design, what kind of content, you know, what, if there's going to be online seminars, if there's going to be, you know, an app that helps local businesses with delivery and, you know, that sort of thing, that's a whole other development process. I feel like this is more of akin to, you know.
Specific to Chamberbusiness.
Yes, yeah.
I understand that, yeah.
So, Councilman?
Bullock, welcome.
And I hope you don't mind if we scooch a little bit of time into.
Fine, thanks. Sorry I was not able to be on time today.
So we're talking about potentially funding the $40,000 for strategic planning and the $30,000 for Chambermaster, depending on council members' willingness. That would put us at a $70,000. And then, once the strategic plan is contin, is completed, that the chamber would come back and share with council about what they've learned.
So that's where we are right now.
So, and if we were to move forward with that, let me just pull up, so that would be $70,000, I'm going to just put this in a separate column here. And Councilman Litton, who was not able to be here at this time, but will be here for full council meeting, has authorized some contribution from his funds, too. So if we were, there's five remaining, Baker, Bullock, couple Litton, Marks. If we were to divide that by five evenly, that'd be 14,000 each, or we can divvy up in different ways. Okay, I'm getting a thumbs up from Councilman Baker, so I'm going to put that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd love to, to me, I'd love to include the business scholarships as well, on the theory that sooner engagement is better. You know, whatever the strategic plan is going to say, we know we're going to want connection between businesses with the chamber. And so to me, doing that sooner than later is, is a good fit. It's also relatively modest cost, so I'm a little, so how, I don't know how the 70 was calculated, but, because it's 40-plus, I guess a portion of the tech and communications tools.
Yes, so that would be 85,000 total, then, if we did the?
If we were to include that.
If we were to include that, which would put us at 17,000 for each contributing council member. Councilman Litton can go up to 10. So if we were to take off?
So I could make up his portion?
Yeah. Okay, so. Oh, minus. And? divided by four. Is that right? Okay. All right, so, Councilwoman Marks, how are we feeling? So Councilman Bullock said that he'd like to, so he'd like to include the small business, the scholarships component, and that Councilman Litton is contributing, would contribute 10, and Councilman Bullock was offering to make up the difference in order to include the scholarship component. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman Bullock.
What if we were to take the approach of offer a portion now, like, like a third of the scholarship fund? And that way, you get started and, and reserve the balance for, as you, as you point out, Councilwoman, that you've got, you know, some, some refinement work underway in the planning process, you know? But again, I think a part of it is COVID and staff transitions have, have had an effect. Some of it is just, you know, restarting the engine, regardless of what the new strategic plan might, might say.
You know, I think, Councilwoman Marks, it's a good point, because I really do like the idea of the scholarships, but part of the strategic plan will certainly be outreach to non-users, so we need to find out why they aren't members in order to know what kind of scholarship they might want or need also.
Yeah, I see where you're going with that. I think there's also, though, some businesses that do want to be and have been longtime members of the chamber, that still would want to be with us through, like, through this transition, I guess, if you will, through our growth phase and through our discovery of what do people want. So we're down a little bit just because of COVID, because people can't afford.
What is the membership dues for a business?
It starts at 195, and that's probably, like, 65% of our membership is the small, you know, mom and pops. you know, mom and pops, independent, sole proprietors.
So how about this, why don't we, so Councilwoman Marks, you, you're, are you comfortable moving forward the 70,000 with the strategic planning and the Chambermaster components?
Yes.
Okay. So if, and if I take off, okay, so I'm going to put in, where am I, this line, where did you go? Chamber, where did it go? Okay, there we go, okay. So if we put in, Councilwoman Litten, then, that takes us to 60, so that would be 15,000 for Baker, Bullock, Keppel, and Marks?
Yes.
Okay. Everyone good? Okay. So then that would get the chamber going with at least the strategic planning and the Chambermaster, and then when, and you don't necessarily have to wait till the strategic plan is complete before you communicate with us with how things are going, but that way you can come back to us and, I know, I'll speak for myself, that I'm excited to see what you find out and what you'll be doing.
I'm so excited, too. I think, I think it will be eye-opening, I really do, and I think it will propel us forward to a new way of doing things, which I'm super excited about, and just look forward to partnering with all of you, because I know you guys are my eyes and ears, too, so I appreciate the knowledge that you guys bring to be able to help me direct this chamber where it needs to go.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Lauren, and thanks to members of the chamber board for being here. So I will go ahead and.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I just ask Lauren one more question. Do you have an idea of how many members would like scholarships?
I do not. I have, so like if you look at the $15,000 nut, that would be about 75 members for a full one-year scholarship. Or if you wanted them to have some skin in the game, which is kind of what we were thinking of, maybe you would offer a half-price scholarship, and that way they're contributing something, that would be 150 for one year. But I know of definitely, I would have to go back and look, because I know that there are definitely members that dropped because they just couldn't afford it, and I would have to go and get a good count of that.
And I, I think once you go through a strategic plan, too, and then you show the membership what you're offering that is new and exciting, they may reconsider that as well, but, you know, having, having a number, I think when you do your survey, if you ask that, too, I think that will be very helpful.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. That would be good information to have coming out of the strategic plan, and then you also know what you need to do to, to recruit and retain them, so. Okay, so I will move to insert the number 70,000 into Resolution 2023-37.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. Then I think I need to move to favorably refer Resolution 2023-37 act of full council as substituted. Is that an acceptable motion? Director Varka, yes, okay. So that, as, that is what my motion, second.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. So we will, we will take this up as substituted at full council at 7:30, and with no further business before committee of the whole, we are adjourned, and housing, planning, and development will start.
Momentarily.
Momentarily, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.